It's nine fifteen AM. We will begin this work session in Lake County Board of County Commissioners. First on the agenda, we have twenty twenty-five legislation wrap-up and update on state funding. Led by contract lobbyist for political advocacy incorporated Elizabeth Rosen, lovely to see you in person instead of on a screen. And deputy county manager Lauren Snyder, our local resident pro on all things related to the subject.
Alright, so um we are officially through with the twenty twenty-five legislative session. Yes, um but put a pin in that, certainly might be back. Um uh you know, it was a little bit more calm this session than it has been the last couple. There weren't as many weekends, there weren't as many two, three AMs. Um I think in part, there's a couple of reasons for that. One, leadership, especially in the House chamber, had kind of really gotten into their groove on how to work together between the Democrats and the Republicans and and um kind of figure out when and where to have their moments. Um and then also, you know, with the last election cycle, the Democrats lost a couple of seats and the Republicans gained a few seats. And then there was a little bit more of a moderation in the party that happened. And so some of the more extremes on both sides of the aisle um didn't come back to the legislature. And so that kind of calmed things down a little bit for some of the debates. So um it kind of, it went back by a little bit better. Um six hundred and fifty bills introduced, roughly two-thirds of those passed. This is less amount of bills than we typically see. Um it has been known to get up to eight hundred bills um in the past. And this is also really interesting because they did so many budget cuts and changes that there ended up being eighty-five orbital bills to make the budget happen. And typically you see like fifteen of those. Um it was really unusual to see so many budget bills going through. Um obviously, we continue to have some conflicts between the more progressive members of the Democrat side. And the governor, um obviously, our governor is Democratic, but he definitely leans a little bit more libertarian, more pro-business um than some of the the members in his caucus. Um Republicans continue to use filibusters as a leverage. Um the budgetary constraints meant that there was only seven point five million dollars for new bills and new legislation to go through. Um this is the first time these legislators are having to have these fiscal constraints. Um they've kind of gotten used to having ARCA funds and other things to be able to use whatever pet projects or new ideas that they want to fund. Um and this year, the one-third that didn't pass mainly were because of lack of appropriations because there just wasn't any money to go through. Um the main items that they really focused on this year were consumer protections, healthcare access, um education funding, specifically K-12 education funding, social justice. And then there are a number of things that the Democrats um in both chambers really tried to work on to solidify in Colorado. Um different protections as they are worried about what might happen under a Trump administration. Um and so you saw that with LGBTQ bill, the House Bill thirteen twelve got a lot of attention. Immigration issues with Senate Bill two seventy-six, voting rights, abortion access. Um and we are starting to see in different states um the Trump administration rolled back federal funding in states that have more progressive policies. So Colorado is gearing up for that. They actually set aside a little over four million dollars for the Attorney General's office in anticipation of lawsuits to happen from the Trump administration against some of the policies that they passed this last session. So they're starting to brace for that. Um as you recall, they faced a one point two billion dollar budget deficit this year. Um Colorado is very unique, is the only state that has taper constraints. So because we can only grow so much fiscally, um we start to max out really quickly. This was also the first year that Medicaid um was the largest part of the budget versus in the past, that's usually been education. So Medicaid keeps growing, um we can't keep up with the growth. Um have a one point two billion dollar budget deficit this year. Um we were concerned that there were going to be a lot of deeper cuts. They did a number of cuts in transportation for the CDOT budget. But for the most part, as we were going through, they were able to get rid of cash funds and grants and move things around. Next year's gonna end up being really tricky for them as they go through. Um so they kind of cut all the education grant programs, transportation, like we talked about. Um minimal cuts to department operating expenses um and sweeps as they went through. They were able to um put a hundred and fifteen million dollars to K-12 funding to avoid reinstating what had been known for years as the budget stabilization factor. So this was amendment twenty-three passed a number of years ago, which says education funding needs to grow each year. Um then there were some lawsuits that said, well, that can only apply to the core um categoricals of education funding and not to what they deem the factors, which is outside of that. It all gets really technical, but um they funded it enough to not have a budget stabilization factor this year. And they also begun a new funding formula for K-12, which was really important to leadership in the governor's office. Amazingly, they were able to do a one point six percent increase in our community provider rates, the Medicaid rates. Um they will not be able to do that again. I don't know how they were able to even pull that off this year. Um and then, as you all know, something that we um and others with CCI and CCAT and really fought for was money for county administration for the Medicaid and SNAP benefits um and CBMS. Especially with the challenges you all have faced from poor leadership on Medicaid redetermination from the state. So your big bill this session that Lauren got started in the summer and then I was able to help out with once um I got brought on in the fall is House Bill ten fifty, which was the regional county jail approach. Do you want to talk about this? This was your baby a little bit.
Sure, I think you guys know it pretty well by now. Uh basically it allows counties um with um to to have a regional jail approach if they have an IGA with another county. And if they have that IGA for a jail in a different county, they are not required to meet the current law that says that any county with two thousand or more people have to have a county jail operating within their county limits. So it basically puts into statute what we've been doing with CHAFI and protects us from any future lawsuit because we do not plan on having a jail that has, that meets the standards that are now rolling out um in the near future.
Has this been able to help out other counties as well?
So I will say that I have been contacted by a lot of other counties that are like, oh, what was this thing that you guys put in place? Like even big counties um that are really interested in this. So um well done.
Yeah, Claire Joyce reached out. Their mind is closing, they're seeing some huge impacts to their budget and they are trying to implement this. But in the inverse, how can I get other counties to bring their folks to to us? Because we should pay two hundred thousand dollars a year to CHAFI, so.
So very good. Um some of the legislation that we supported and weighed in on, um House Bill eleven fifty-two. So you'll recall a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, there was House Bill eleven-ten, which put in place um disability access requirements um for online websites, all that kind of stuff. Um which is great, but also has been hard in terms of compliance for local governments to do. Um so school districts were coming forward and running um legislation. Um that would give, that would indemnify you all if the problem wasn't you, it was the original vendor that put together the platform and the program. Um and um so we said, well, you know, can we have local governments being part of that? Um so we got into some of those conversations and then um the state and CCI and others got really excited. I remember when I brought this up to Chris, I was like, hey, I think you're gonna want to amend us in there. And she was like, yes, please. Um so this is something that we weighed in on. We were able to get those amendments and it expanded from just school districts to local government contracting entities. Um so this is something that will be helpful for us and again, hopefully avoid costly lawsuits when just mistakes are made. Um we also weighed in on a number of human services issues this year, um especially with some things that are coming from HIPAA and Director Ben Steffer. Um when it comes to direction of how to use the funding that we were able to secure with you all with the Joint Budget Committee. Um she seems to be wanting to put in place very top-heavy rules that don't make sense for small counties when it comes to how to um whether or not to roll back pay for human services directors, to have standing positions at hospitals and other things. So we continue to weigh in on that through rulemaking um with um some of our other smaller county partners um and associations. Um and then also um just letting the Joint Budget Committee know what's going on so that if needed, they can kind of come in and say, wait, we didn't, we didn't intend to attach all those strings to the funding. You need a chill out here. And that's where Senator Kirkmeier has gotten really helpful for us too. Do you want to add on that, Lauren? You've been very involved in that.
Yeah, we've started to see some movement. Um they had standard business operating rules that they were trying to pass that basically said every county needs to do this exact thing, every case that comes in. The goal being clients have the exact same experience whether we live in Weld County or Lake County. Uh the resources in Weld County, local authorities than we have here. Uh so we pushed back. Lauren did a great job testifying in front of um uh the Kim Bin Steffer, I just want to call her Kim Bin all the time.
I know.
Uh Director Bin Steffer, they did put up a hold on those rules moving forward. They're gonna do additional stakeholder feedback and we have asked for in one-on-one meeting with her to talk about alternatives. But there's a lot of entities, like we just got a grant from Gary, Gary Community Ventures to help our business processes. That would basically become a moot point because they would help us create one specific to us and then the state would basically change that. And so I think other partners didn't know this was happening and they're starting to get more engaged because they know things look different in each county. So um yeah, it's moving so far.
Um another bill that we were really engaged in keeping an eye on, the county lobby tax expansion. Um the meaning with this bill is it went from um the six percent down to the five percent. That's what kind of got negotiated in order to get that through. Um CCI obviously was very engaged, so for those of you who um spend a lot of time with CCI, you should probably have a lot of um knowledge of this bill. Um uh one of the interesting things is um we're starting to come into Governor Polis's lame duck era. Um you would not have seen different legislation of his get just killed in the chambers um as easily as a couple pieces did this year. One of those is note, um is the Yippee bill, which is with the Yes in God's Backyard bill. Um where you could have, you could kind of get around um local licensing and authority in a certain way to build on both educational and um religious owned lands. Um a lot of people didn't like that, um and that ended up dying in the Senate. But I do think that they will bring some version of that back next year, um which will be Governor Polis's last term. So it's going to be really interesting to see how the chambers play um and how much of a priority his issues continue to be when he only has one more year left. Um there's a number of others in leadership that will only have one more year left, like Speaker McCloskey will be on for last year. Um but the rest of the leadership um will have more years. So they might be looking more for their own priorities than governors as we move into next session. Um some concerning legislation that we um could possibly still be vetoed that we're um paying attention to. House Bill twelve seventy-one, um what this is proposing to do is um take the federal benefits and youth foster care and saying that you all don't get to keep some of those federal benefits for the admin cost of overseeing care for that foster child. Um so this could really be a big hit to different county human services budgets. Um not being able to have some of those survivor benefits offset the costs that you all incur um for these foster kiddos. Um so we have a number of counties that we're weighing in with um that um are asking for veto on this. The department, um state departments are also very concerned about this bill. So um we'll see, he still has some time on those. Also, House Bill thirteen hundred, which is with workers' compensation. You know, there's always a number of bills that sound like a good idea, but then at the end of the day, end up costing money. So this is about having um uh more worker-directed um choice when it comes to their doctors. But as you guys have conversations with Pinnacle and your workers' compensation providers, they say, well, this is gonna make your workers' compensation go up quite a bit. So it's another one that we didn't really get into, but we're watching because there is a good likelihood that the governor will probably veto this just because it'll cost so much for both businesses and local governments. So school districts engaged and and others. Um you're seeing local governments start to engage more with what is typically considered business legislation. Just as budgets get so tight, both for counties and school districts and others, these more business-type legislation also impacts how you all run. Um and so we're kind of seeing that trend of getting involved in more. One of those that we did get involved in, you want to add? That we did get involved in that um did end up dying, that we were really concerned about, that you'll recall, was um the extreme temperatures legislation. Um where it said if if you have some extreme temperatures, you have to do a lot more time off. You have to do pay in different ways. Um and you know, we went in there and said, so we're pretty much an extreme temperature here in in Leadville, Lake County. Um mostly here. Um that did come from some workers up in this area. So um that talked to their unions down in Denver. So just FYI, there is some movement up here with regards to those conversations. And again, we anticipate to see that legislation next year as well. Um with potential governor vetoes, he has until June sixth to sign any bills or veto legislation or let them become law without his signature. So that always becomes a really um interesting deadline that we pay attention to. Um he has vetoed some bills already, but the most notable one so far was Senate Bill five, which was the Labor Peace Act, um which would have eliminated the second vote required um to officially recognize um a union. So right now in Colorado, um you can come in, have union conversations, have the vote that yes, you do want to become a union. And then there's conversations and processes on what the dues are going to be and how that's going to work. And then it's required to have a second vote. Um this is not the case in all states and a number of states, you, it's hit or miss, one or two votes. Um Business really engaged on this and said that this was um shouldn't be the case. Um and the governor sided with Business on on this one, which again is is typical of him. He is, in the past, vetoed what he thinks are heavy union bills. Um so leaning back to the original conversation that he tends to be a little bit more libertarian than a lot of his caucus when it comes to issues that he's working on. Um looking ahead, again, because of lack of budget, um a lot of the interim's um uh leg, interim committees that would have been um meeting um are not. They are gonna have kind of their normal standing committees still meet. So the Transportation Legislative Review Committee, TLRC, will still meet. The Joint Budget Committee, obviously, will still meet. Um but uh we won't have, um it'll be interesting as the legislators move into next session. You know, the rule is they get five bills. Well, there's a hundred legislators, six hundred and fifty bills were introduced. So that is not a hard and fast rule. Um but what you often see is legislators will get put on interim committees so that they can run bills that they want through that committee and not impact their first five bills. Um with no interim committees, those bill titers are gonna go really quickly. Um so it's just something to be aware of as as we're looking towards the next session. And then obviously, um the Joint Budget Committee is gonna meet in June, have the next second landmark forecast for Colorado, see how we're trending, and then continued growth and rumors around a special session. The last time that I talked to um Director Ferrandino with the Office of State Planning and Budgeting, he said, don't make any vacation plans in early October. Um in part because some of our JBC members do have vacation plans in the end of September. So I think they're already narrowing in on October. Um just administrative changes and Medicaid potential cuts that we are anticipating from the federal government will put Colorado out of balance. Um and so we would have to come back and rebalance, um which again makes us nervous about what other areas there are to cut at this point. Um so spending a lot of time um having conversations with the Joint Budget Committee and others, making sure that they continue to protect your county admin budgets, Medicaid, and other things as we move forward. And that, that's all the good news I have for you for today.
Thank you so much for that.
We're happy to, we're happy to field any questions you may have.
Can I use my? So in the draft skinny budget, whatever that passed the House, the federal level, it says that states will have to pay a higher match for Medicaid if you have any programs that serve um undocumented individuals. Do you think we will see a repeal of the two programs that we have that are state-funded? So as to not get, think that match?
I mean, I think, I think that there's a lot of concern around that. Um right now, uh we had a conversation this last week with um Senator Bennett's office, um who, he said he doesn't see that package getting through of that chamber. In part though, because they think that it doesn't do enough to cut Medicaid. And so depending on how much the Trump administration really wants something to pass with this state beautiful bill, it could be more.
Well. I mean, we see changes with SNAP. And the state's having to take on a lot more of the benefit, cost of the of the benefit or your EBT benefit, so is the admin. What are things that we can do now to talk to Polis administration about just shifting those costs down to us? That could be like a two to three hundred thousand dollar impact pretty instantaneously for us?
Yeah.
What should we be thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be hundreds of millions of dollars to the state, right? Um and so definitely be um, we can be setting up meetings with your legislators. Um happy to get going on those if you would like to kind of have some check-ins with them immediately. And then engaging, obviously, with our county, with our stakeholder partners like CCAT and CCI um of what budget conversations. So you know, we're setting up meetings and having those conversations with the Joint Budget Committee. We're always careful to want to make sure that we're checking in with um the county human services departments who do a really good job of putting together. But um they should be, we should be having lots of letters and lots of meetings and conversations also coming from CCI and CCAT around those specific issues that are are concerned.
Great.
So I would check in and see what they're doing a little bit and how we can engage and make sure their messaging, we're echoing with our legislators here as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Anyone? How many, how many laws do you reckon get passed every year?
Um five hundred or so.
Does anybody ever say, okay, that's enough laws, like let's take a five-year break?
Um.
Are they all needed or are some of these?
No, they're not all needed.
Ego laws?
Yep.
Or furthering their political careers?
You know, I think in part you see so much legislation and policy work here in Colorado because the legislators, there's a whole, there's so much they can't do. They can't raise taxes, they can't, you know, so they have so many limitations when it comes to what they can do. So they focus a lot on policy. Um and honestly, what I do, a lot of people like me, is try to make the bills that they're introduced match what you're already doing in current practice. And so there's a lot of that that you'll see, bills, to your point, are they all needed? No, because a lot of the legislation, at the end of the day, once they get amended, kind of just puts in the statute, your current practice is what we try to do. And so then the bill isn't needed, but they get a win, go back to their electors, especially with the House, with them running every two years. Every two years, they feel like they need to have something that they go back to the voters to show that they, I did this, so.
From this chair, sometimes it feels like there's a really giant disconnect between rural Colorado and the Front Range. How aware, like what do you think the overall level of awareness is down there of like, hey, this is a great idea, this is a horrible idea for, you know, twelve sixty-four counties or twenty of these sixty-four counties? Like, how how cognizant do you think people are down there of this divide?
I think there's a general sense of like, oh, it's different and harder in our rural communities, but not what does that mean? And like, how does that show up, right? And I think a perfect example of it is what we're engaging with, with um with HIPAA. With, you know, them wanting to put out rules that are very specific and make sense and larger counties can do, and completely forgetting that smaller counties just one, don't have the resources, and two, it just literally doesn't make sense um to have staff spend time spent in that way. Um so you'll hear that especially the legislators a lot say, oh, well, we have to be careful of, you know, what um limitations we're putting on our smaller rural counties. But they don't always know what that really means.
Okay, thanks.
And I, and I would add too, especially you all being so unique. Um I think a lot of times their brains go to rural counties that are more resort communities, um which have benefits and challenges of their own. And that's where a lot of the thought process comes into, so they just think of those more.
They think of rural counties as resort counties?
So, well, no, they tend to like think more of the rural counties that are resort counties, right?
When they think rural, they can think of the resort counties. Is that because they're showing up more? Like, why do they?
I think they show up a little bit more. Um I also think the more legislators that just get into those.
Yeah, because there's money there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And also the resorts that are there.
Yeah, 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 totally.
Draw them and their families to enjoy while we are living in Colorado.
Crestview there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the state reps come from those communities. How effective, or how much do they listen to CCI and how effective is, do they listen to you?
I try, yeah, I try to get them. You know, you guys are in a great position having the Speaker of the House. So um we do regular check-ins with her because she wants to hear regularly what is happening um and and where you guys are at on legislation. And then Senator Basely also really cares about where you're at. Um we had a couple of direct check-ins with him throughout this session. Our Lauren would reach out and text occasionally of like, hey, this is an important bill to us. Here, here's where we're at on this issue. Um he just doesn't have as much sway down there. Um I will say, you know, one of the things on your behalf that, you know, we were trying to do is elevate that voice within CCAT and CCI for you all. Um again, I think some of our rural resort communities have been effective in doing that within CCI and CCAT. And so getting in with the lobbyists and saying, hey, you know, lean on us here. Um we have lobby support and we can help round out your conversations. But I would say um CCI and CCAT are both effective at the Capitol. Um they tend to um zero in on slightly different issues. Um just depend, that's, and that's kind of the nature of how they were created separately. So CCAT tends to weigh in a little bit more when it comes to some environmental issues. They definitely weigh in on um the uh housing issues. Uh CCI, I just see them more in the human services areas and and also the housing. But they definitely check in and, you know, now that they know that you all have representation, wanting to make sure, like if you guys aren't at meetings or if you are at meetings, coming back and saying, so here's what I'm hearing from the commissioners, is that matching? How can we support that? What are we working on?
Cool.
Yeah. But I would definitely encourage you guys to get into their different boards that they have and be sitting on there elevating that voice, which you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, officially, go ahead and get started with this work session, Lake County Board of County Commissioners. It is ten AM. Uh first up on the agenda today, or we're on agenda item number two, sorry, yes. Uh a discussion around the OHV regulations.
Thank you so much.
My, my Aunt Snyder.
Thank you.
I need to busy mouse and let you.
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, I'm ready. You can just make that go away. So true. That one?
The next one. There we go, okay.
All right, here we go. Okay, um so, thank you so much. Okay, um so today we really want to um kind of, we created an agenda. Um and what we really wanted to do today was just go over a brief history of ordinance twenty four oh one. Um talk about the process that came out of the regulation. Um in the form of the car shall rec uh roadway permit and the conditional use permit, which has always been in place. And then talk about implementation, talk about pending applications and our recommendations for moving forward. There um we'll recognize though that we invited um the outfitter and guiding community. Um to, as we do with any time that we are talking to the board um on this topic. But today we're hoping if things come up along the way, um we're gonna take notes, create a parking list, a lot of maybe items that. May not may not want to unpack today, um but that certainly are are items that, you know, we want to talk about in the future. So I'm certainly ready to create that list if things come up as we go through this. Um the first is just that history piece, really want to hit on some of the milestones of this work. Um you know, we've been talking about uh commercial use on county roadways since before the listening session. In twenty twenty two, but this has been a pretty long journey um over a two year period of um a a scope of work. That um community planning and development was commissioned with as far as creating um the uh regulations and the process. So in twenty twenty two, we started our first kind of public listening sessions and everything that's in the light blue are times when the public was invited. To participate within the discussion where it was an opportunity for us to gather more information. From um this segment of our community and also community members at large that had um thoughts and concerns regarding um the topic. Um in twenty twenty three, we did, we held in January our first public work session and really kind of um talked about what the the scope of work would be. Um in February, the moratorium was put into effect, which restricted any addition, new commercial um use within the county while we worked through the regulations. Um through March and April, we worked on revising the regulations to um include commercial use within the ordinance. And adopted a new ordinance within that timeframe in twenty twenty three. Knowing that there was still work to be done, but it was kind of a stopgap measure that um allowed us to be able to include commercial use within. Um previous, there was a previous ordinance out there um that recognized county roads as multi-use roads. But didn't have any language in it regarding commercial use. So the first um version of the ordinance came about in twenty twenty three during those March and April timeframe. In November, we did another town hall meeting um where we got got um more input. Um from the community. Through that whole year, um we had um a online survey, we distributed surveys, we held. Um interviews, both individual and group interviews with um uh different user groups, different members of our community. Um and from the commercial operators themselves that were working in Lake County. Um twenty twenty four, January, we had um another work session um on the topic. And uh ordinance twenty four oh one was introduced by the Board of County Commissioners. February in twenty twenty four, um we had the public hearing and then the um March, it became effective. Continuing on. Um continuing on into twenty twenty four, in November, um the previous Board of County Commissioners. Um did three things on in regards to the ordinance or um they provided a grace period. Through um June of twenty twenty five for the commercial recreation permit permit. Um on the East Side Mining District, they decided to go with a singular um road maintenance uh agreement for an exclusive grooming contract. And they put out an R RFP which was awarded to the snowmobile club for grooming of the East Side Mining District. Um and that big came in at twelve thousand dollars and was distributed to the commercial um uh operators on the East Side Mining District. And that brings us to today and our recommendations for the board. So the first thing on, the next thing on the agenda was to talk about the process. So there are two different types of permits that um the uh that are relative to OHV uh use. Um from a commercial standpoint, and first is the commercial recreation roadway permit. Keep thinking CRRP might be a good acronym, but I'm always stumbling over that too. So these are the submittal requirements that are required under this new permit that was created through this scope of work. Um and we ask for this information to be included. Um the routes, the type of business, what type of machines, hours and days of operation, what the trip volumes look like. What what are the numbers of employees and qualifications and kind of employee ratio to participants? Um what's the address of the base of operations? The ordinance only recognizes um or or requires um commercial operations like county roads to have a base of operation either in the city or the county. So we want to know where that's located. We want them to identify any effects on public services, whether that be fire, sheriff, emergency management. Or possibly the ways that they coordinate with emergency services um and and through their emergency management plan. An impact mitigation plan for for each of the commercial operations to identify. Um if there are any impacts from their operations and how they manage those. Um they are the experts on um these operations and a lot of them have very good plans. On how they manage trash or stranded um other uh users that might be stranded on trail. Or how they um do a safety talk before they go out. So we just want to know how do they, how do they mitigate any kind of adverse impacts? And also then their emergency management plan. So those are all the things that need to come in as part of their submittal requirements for the permit itself. Um the ordinance also uh brought into uh regulation or requirement that a roadway maintenance agreement um be signed. And um this is under the authority of the roadway supervisor or public works director. They have the sole authority to administer this agreement. And there's three different options for a commercial operation to um participate in roadway maintenance. So one is a payment of a designated amount, so in the case of this past year on the East Side Mining District. Um that's a great example where the board elected to go with a single groomer. And um then they would be asking for anyone that utilized um that winter groomed area. Through a commercial operation to participate in the payment for that. So that was one solution and that's the solution that the previous board chose for this winter, past winter season. The other option um is to pay three percent of gross receipts. This is a model that's used um in other areas that we um uh brought forward through the um investigation and and research. Into how to manage this um agreement. And the other, in rare instances, um the uh roadway supervisor may choose. To allow certain operators to do their own grooming. Um and again, that authority lies solely vested um with the roadway supervisor and the public works director. But those are the three pathways of compliance for the uh maintenance agreement. The standards, the ordinance requires, again, I already mentioned, the base of operations in the city or the county, um liability insurance. Um uh they have to have previously operated in Lake County, so one of the things that the ordinance did. Um was really shut the door on any new commercial motorized use in Lake County. Um and this was to allow some time to fully understand that degree of use and whether or not what our carrying capacity is for future use. Um so the ordinance specifies that this can only be um a company that's already previously operated. Um as a commercial operator. Um statutory noise requirements in residential areas, consideration of not exceeding statutory noise uh regulations. And then um those are just some highlights of the ordinance and then of course, compliance with all elements of the ordinance itself. The process then, so the applications come in with that information. And then staff goes out through a referral um process. So depending on where the routes are and what the impacts may be, um that may be the forest service. Um that may, it will definitely be public works, um parks record open space, emergency management. Um and any other identified stakeholders that need to weigh in on the operations and just provide feedback. Um and then a staff review is conducted and developed, a report is developed. And then a Board of County Commissioners hearing is scheduled to bring the application forward. With an opportunity for staff to present all the findings and information that they have um gathered. Also an opportunity for the applicant to present their application and go through their operations, answer any questions that the board may have. And then the approval criteria for determining um the approval, um approval with condition or a basis for denial. Has to be based in the the following approval criteria. Um that the proposed permit shall not likely be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare of county residents. Or other recreational users, that the proposed permit shall not result in an overly intensive use. Um uh relative to the condition, the existing condition of the roadway or existing volume of use in that area. That the proposed use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And that there has been an acceptable emergency management plan. And that the proposed permit demonstrates that natural and manmade hazards can and will be adequately mitigated. So those are the basis for the findings in order to approve. So conditions may have to be drafted as part of staff would recommend um conditions along with feedback that they got. Um to help inform and make those findings possible. And then there is within the ordinance and enforcement and review. So um if there is a justifiable, justifiable basis, um permit. Are um subject to review um through a uh hearing process, which gives the applicant an opportunity to. Obviously also defend their position if there was um any um allegation of uh misconduct over the permit. But before there would ever be a Board of County Commissioners hearing over such matters. There is an administrative um required process where if there are any um uh matters that need to. Potentially come before the board, there is an opportunity first to administratively work those out directly. Through um the permit administrator and the operator. Um a lot of times we saw, we we find that these things are resolvable. And um so in those rare instances when they can't be, um then there would be a process to um enforce the permits. Seems very similar to a land use. Very um very similar to a short term rental license.
Yeah.
Um it's, it follows a similar pattern uh or process. And then the conditional use permit, and so any outfitter and guides that have a base of operations in Lake County are required to have. A uh conditional use permit, so outfitting and guiding is allowed in um a array of different zonings, zone districts. Um but they are all conditionally allowed, so they all require conditional use permits. So moving forward to kind of where we are right now with pending applications and how does this play out in real time in Lake County? So we have three outfitter and guides based in Lake County. One snowmobile operation that operates on private and public land that requires a CUP. One snowmobile and OHV company um that is uh going to be located on private land that requires um a CUP. And one snowmobile with an existing CUP but has expanded to an unpermitted private land that requires a CUP. For the additional parcel that they now operate on. And. Um one outfitter and guiding company that's based in Lebo that holds a Lebo business license. Um so the three, the first three all require conditional use permits. And all four companies require a a a commercial recreation roadway permit. Moving forward here. Um so CPD's recommendation, um we would like to move forward with enforcing the zoning compliance. So doing the CUP applications, something um that uh is certainly something that we maintain. The the land development code for the county is something that CPT um is commissioned with and that is something that we oversee. However, the recommendation is consideration of transition of the commercial rec roadway permitting outside of of CPD. And the rationale behind that is that we have no authority to oversee the maintenance agreement. Um that is solely vested with public works. So one of the um ways that um these operations are successful is um what the ordinance requires. Is compliance with the roadway ma- maintenance agreement. Um but CBET doesn't have any authority to negotiate those, approve anyone to do grooming. And so that has just been kind of a sticking point for us to not get things over the finish line. And and also, you know, while roadways have um an impact on long term, a long range planning. We are not the roadway and recreation specialists for Lake County and in the organization. And so much of the oversight and the success of this of this ordinance and future maybe expansion or. Um it it really is vested in different departments other than community planning and development. Um and I had provided the final report that we did back in November. Um and since the start of this work. It was always believed that we would assist with creating the regulations and the process, something that we have expertise in. But the actual implementation um would always be passed off to other departments. Um there is enforcement, there is actual, you know, recreation, monitoring, um caring capacity consideration, those kind of things. And so CPD was only really vested in creating the process and the regulation and then there was going to be a pass off. And so that's one of the reasons, there simply just does not, there's not capacity in CPD to do this final step. Um and this is also because of those areas of that are really outside our um oversight or authority. It has created um moments, very difficult moments for my staff to manage these communications with companies. Um and it's probably also felt at times frustrating for the companies themselves in all modesty. So this is just probably a a suggestion to maybe implement this in in a more um effective manner. And then um the other recommendation is also seeking and getting and and we we also absolutely recognize that there has been transitions and turnovers. In in the departments that started this journey with us a couple of years ago and so they need some time to to understand. Um the process will be there to, as a referral agent, we can also be there to coach as well. But there was also future work and goals that um this work was going to take on. Um and a lot of that was youth programming. We believe that if there was uh youth education and programming, um we could address some of the safety concerns. the safety concerns for our community's youth around OHV use. Enforcements and then at least reviewing whether a sticker program had any merit, if it would work or not. It was a part of the work that had been brought up and had started some discussion but needed more work to be done to see if it would be effective in Lake County as a good tool. So recommendation of wherever the work lands, continuing to make sure that those future goals were addressed and at least researched and, and developed if, if they made sense. And just, these are the goals that we think that we'll achieve with our recommendation. I think that we'll be looking at seventy-five to a hundred percent zoning compliance within the next three to six months. So we have three companies that need conditional use permits. And if we can just really focus on what we do well and what we are truly vested to do, we can get the zoning piece done. We can get the conditional use permits done in the next three to six months. We also think that these, the ordinance itself, the regulations, I know there's some discussion about maybe some concerns over the final product of the regulations. But what I'm going to suggest is you have to administer them. You have to get through that first year of administration to really make sure, you know, where are the true areas that we need to adjust in? We haven't even been able to have them in place yet to be able to even see how well they're working or how they need to be adjusted. The goal of the, the ordinance itself though, is to really look at balancing the user groups and, and making sure there's access for everyone in these different areas. Increase the overall satisfaction of the user groups. And then increase the safety, maintain safety at a minimum, maybe increase safety for all users on county roadways. And then the collection of, of data that can really help inform those future capacity questions about are we, should we keep it to only the commercial motorized operations that we have? Is there room for expansion? You know, those kinds of questions can only really be fully vetted with a collection of more information. So this gives a pathway forward to better understand what is the degree of use and how is that being impacted and is there any additional capacity or not? Ensure that the commercial use is responsible for contributing to roadway maintenance. We all realize that we do need to make sure that commercial operations do, are responsible for the impact that they have to the roadway maintenance. And so the ordinance does provide a pathway for compliance in three different ways. And then really distribute the workload more evenly through the organization. And we've already talked about that. I think that this will bring about a more effective implementation and an opportunity to see the regulations in, in real time and if there needs to be adjustments. But I think that we've got to get through this, this first, at least couple of years, if not at least first year of compliance. So we think this is a pathway to get there. But we do understand that we would absolutely have to work with Candace and see what her vision is for the distribution of this workload. And today we're just looking for feedback on kind of some thoughts around that.
Yeah, totally open up for questions. I know there is a lot more elements and conversations and topics around the subject. So happy to talk about a few of them or create a parking list for things that we can talk about at another time.
Thank you.
Sure.
This feels, you know, a bit like a lot of people are getting dragged into what I'm observing was initially an issue with the east side. That's kind of like the, the gut feeling I have on this. It's what I observed at previous meetings. And it seems a little weird to me that we've got people operating on private land that are being negatively affected by things they didn't really contribute to in any way. So if I'm understanding this right, anyone who's even operating on private land or just with the Forest Service is still having to pay into the grooming plan that is essentially focused on the east side?
No.
No?
No, so, and let me, may I comment just on that? So private land, so there's two different permits. Whether, if you're on private land or public land, if you're on private land, you have to have a conditional use permit. And the commercial rec, the commercial rec permit roadway is specific only to the commercial operation operating on whatever segment of roadway they are. So if the, like the twelve thousand dollar contract that we got for the snowmobile club to groom the east side, only users that are using those areas are responsible for paying into that expense.
Okay, sorry for that misunderstanding on that one.
Yeah.
Permitting misconceptions are something that else that has popped up with me when I talk with outfitters. And then I'll have conversations with CPD. It seems like there's a pretty big disconnect there. What are things we can do to help those conversations and get everyone on the same page when people feel like they're not going to get their permits in time? But that could be inaccurate based on what I'm hearing from CPD.
Well, we have given a lot of, of additional time. As you saw, the ordinance has been effective since March of last year. There have been numerous attempts by staff to shepherd people through the process. We took additional time, we came to the board and said, hey, this is taking, this is a little harder process. We want to make sure that they feel supported through the process. We took additional time. And we're here today saying, we think we're pretty darn close on the commercial recreation permits. And, and we think we're pretty close on the conditional use permits, two very separate types of reviews. But, but it, I would say that we have done as much as we can to kind of support and give additional time. And I think it's time that we have to, we just have to administer them. There are a lot of fears around, what if I'm not approved? What if, you know, the approval criteria are very straightforward. And what if my permit isn't issued another year? Well, there has to be a basis for not issuing the permit. If a lot of what we've heard and what we know, some of the information we also know is that we have existing use, that their operations are going very smoothly. And there aren't really, you know, so some of those, those worries and concerns may be not really relevant. Because if you are operating, the, the regulations don't have enforcement to say, if you have been operating per what you agreed to do, your plan, how you came in, how you said you were going to do it, and we permit it, then, then you're allowed to continue on. But the annual is just to make sure that things don't need to be adjusted. And then there's the, the ability to do a three-year permit. So I think that there's the concern that there could be some type of arbitrary basis for revoking the annual permit. I think the annual permit was certainly something that was a area of concern for all the contractors and our companies that are currently in operation because of their planning process. The previous board thought, well, we still want to see how it goes for a year. And then we can do longer-term, three-year permits, like the Forest Service. They like that model. They wanted a year to see things in practice, see how it was going, seeing if things needed to be adjusted a bit before they gave those longer-term permits. There's no reason though, that longer-term permits couldn't be considered. That was a decision by the previous board. It was an outstanding area of concern for feeling that it could damage or have a negative effect on the current operations. So there is room for reconsideration if a longer term, other than a year. That was a final decision by the previous board. It was something that we did bring back those concerns after we had the town hall meeting at CMC. That was one of, you know, the biggest concerns. And the board decided that they did want to stick with the year at a time, for a period of time, and then go to the longer term. It, it's changeable, it's, if, if this board would like to look at it differently. But again, I think a reliance that the permits can't be denied for some kind of arbitrary reason, there would have to be a basis.
The big thing that I do like in this ordinance is that it feels like we're preserving the existing companies, closing the door on letting anyone just roll in here and start up a new outfitter guiding company to use that gray area on the county roads there. You know, the, the transition that you're talking about to, you know, which department, you know, like, I understand this is kind of, a lot of this gets outside of CPD's wheelhouse with, you know, some of the intricacies of snowpack machine, which machines are which, you know, I mean, we had a long conversation about the difference between electric bikes and electric motorcycles and like how many different levels and layers there are. Where, where do we go with that? I mean, is this going to be like an advisory board? Do we, you know, get the Forest Service on board? How does it like, I don't even know where that goes, you know? So I think road and bridge, Public Works, it's, feels like we're on the cusp of needing a whole new group to help make these decisions. And the best way that gets everybody's input on board. And I, this is a new subject, so I think it's going to take up a lot of discussion on this one.
The work, originally the work group that worked on these were Public Works, PROS, and Law Enforcement were our partners and, and Emergency Management. Those were the partners that collaborated on this scope of work with the thought originally that we would pass the permitting off to PROS. So that, that was the original thought. The roadway maintenance agreement was always the, the authority of Public Works. Enforcement of the regulations would be Law Enforcement. So that's how we had initially, and that CPD was creating and going through the ordinances and the moratorium. And we had more experience on that side. Also convening people and having public engagement conversations, the surveying, the interviewing process. So that's, that's where we lent experience and expertise. And, and that was the, that was the thought process behind the initial creation of regulations and how the other departments would plug in. And so just, that was, that was the original thought.
So PROS, who would be this final, who would bring all that together, PROS?
PROS would, yeah. Depending on what the application was, they would send it out to review, they would identify kind of who the stakeholders would be. CPD would be happy to be a referral agent and help with, you know, helping through that process. But they would be looking for, and, and again, I know that this is a time that like the rec advisory board is, is, you know, there's conversations around whether or not that, you know, that'll be functioning. But yeah, when we started this several years ago, there was a thought that PROS would be able to support this through the recreational aspect.
Is this still the thought?
Yeah.
I don't think that the base knowledge skills are really, you know, of just OHVs in general are really encompassed in what is currently PROS.
And we want to make sure it's a neutral or positive process.
That all parties are at the table on whoever's, you know, advising this.
Can I ask you a really basic question? Why, other than like people being annoyed or being fussy about OHVs, why is this ordinance valuable?
I think, I, I do think there's value in the ordinance. I think that, one, it did like commissionarily mentioned, it, it limit, it gave a, as we were looking around at the amount of businesses that were wanting to come in and take advantage of our local roadways as commercialized opportunities to open new businesses. It does limit it to the four existing.
Sure.
I think that's, I think that's a huge positive. I also think that it was, the ordinance was designed to also not incur and make sure there, another big pain point was that not everybody was paying their, their fair share for their impact from commercial use on the roads. And this was a way to level that off and make sure that everybody was equally responsible. You know, some, there was suggestions that some people were doing a great job and that it was going well. And then there were suggestions that it wasn't as equally shared as it should be. And so it was, it also did that. It also gave an opportunity for data collection and the ability to consider caring capacity. There was also a concern that the motorized use on the east side was, was threatening the balance of general use on the east side. And so it was a way to make sure that commercial use on the east side in particular was not over, creating an inability for general use on the east side. That was an area that seemed to be in conflict as we gained community input. So it gave an ability to monitor what that use is because it was completely unrestricted previously. So, and again, roads are, this was the only way to kind of come up with regulations that spoke to roadway use.
Yeah.
We aren't talking about land parcels that have zoning. So it was a control mechanism to, to make sure that the activities, the commercial activities were not infringing upon other recreational use. So those were really the basis of probably the strongest benefits of it.
I know Chris worked on this a lot with me. Can you think of anything else that I'm missing that, you know, was really?
I think that it was the primary. Yeah, that was the primary. And the big part of it was the impact on the east side and concerns from folks that lived and routinely recreated on that side in non-motorized wells, wanting to make sure that we found some balance so that it wasn't one excluding the other.
There were other areas too of where commercial use might be infringing on general use or even county, you know, county parking lots, different areas that we wanted to, again, it was really, I think, at the, a lot of the intention behind this was balance. Not excluding any user groups, just making sure that there was an ability to ensure balance, whether that be in different parking areas that were open to the public. So any of those public facilities, we just wanted to ensure that there was good access and a good balance.
Thank you.
So you've limited the number of licenses to whoever's currently has one? Is there a limit to the growth of the business?
So the permit spoke about that. So the, the, the permit could look at the potential for expansion and what would that mean? So that was the other, you know, what, to what degree were they currently operating at? Provide that mechanism? What if they intend to expand? Did we have the caring capacity for that and still maintain that balance? So another thing for the annual. So you can look at annually, are they expanding in degree of use? Would they like to add in summer tours? Would they like, whatever it was?
Yeah.
It gave an ability to look Um it gave it uh an ability to look at, that's a really great point, thanks for bringing that up, but that was another way to measure what was happening.
And does the business hold the license, if the business sold, the license would grow?
The licenses, I have to remember, it, are they transferable on that, it's in the ordinance? Does anybody remember real quick? They are transferable?
I thought we, I remember us talking about that and I thought they were because that's, this is an asset.
Yeah. It wanted to be, oh my god.
That's an asset for the business and so.
Yes.
Making the non-transferable would essentially affect the business value.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be crippling.
That's right, so yes, we made them transport that, that's exactly right. Again, these regulations were were tr- they were tried to, there was an attempt to really balance them too.
Yeah.
To really um give an advantage to the businesses that are already here operating. Um and but to create some regulation and basis to monitor what's happening. Um you know, because there, there was a lot of community concern.
Yeah.
Um ways as well, so it was a way to try to balance what those concerns are. Also make sure that our recreational assets were open for the general public. What about um uh like Ted department having an input in this? Because I think that a lot of what Adam does is like um destination stewardship. Where you're talking about those mixed users, trying to manage that and then also trying to not hinder growth. But grow in a way that is beneficial for our community and the and the industries we're trying to. Grow that aren't going to smother other ones, et cetera. Just seems like, it seems like Ted would have a really good Ted, like it's a.
Yeah.
Little stuffed toy.
Yeah, I like that guy.
Yeah.
Is that Ted? No, yeah, Adam would be valuable in all this, cause I I the word tourism comes up so many times, you know, it's. Part, you know, it's tied to the economy, it's tied to, you know, local jobs, these businesses are valuable.
Well, and these, the whole point of the, what I'm hearing from you, Anne, is that the ordinance was built so that it could just be like pause, we're getting our baseline data. We're just looking at what's happening now, so that we can see what kind of an impact we have, so that we can grow in healthy ways. Or so we can reduce the impact in healthy ways, it doesn't deter um economic growth, et cetera, et cetera. So it's built to grow, is the, this ordinance is built to grow. It's built to grow and 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 also, you know, really look and and define what those impacts are.
Yeah.
And make sure that they're they're properly mitigated and so, you know, Ted wasn't a department or in existence in twenty twenty two.
Right. Got it.
And um but it, I can appreciate permitting, adding permitting to any department. Um is a lift.
Yeah.
Um and we could be here to support, but where we're at is, you know. The biggest lift of a planning department is the cop plan.
Yeah.
You really want us there. And this is is really distracting from, you know, the work that we're trying to complete for the county. I hear, I hear that all the way, I'm definitely, I would lean on Candace to see where the different departments could expand or receive.
I think for me, it depends on, because this is all due to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Um how many permits are we talking about collectively, just the four?
Yeah.
But we say it's built to grow, so would there ever be more than the four, that's the question that I have.
Right.
And also just trying to think about what we see other counties who have O H Vs doing. Is what we're doing standard practice or are we really just um building a completely different model that doesn't make sense long term? So I just wanna make sure we don't dump things on a department that doesn't have the systems in place to manage it.
For our sa- for our size.
Yeah.
Sure, there are plenty of other counties that have the manager.
Tons of people.
Right, I don't think you must have asked.
Yeah, we went, we researched lots of different areas through this two years of work. And and honestly, the answer in in some areas are they've just prohibited the use.
Hmm.
Um and they've taken the road of least trouble and and just prohibited it. And and like having never, you know, we were never of that mindset, we understood that the benefit, that the, you know. The economic benefit and the jobs um that would be impacted and so there was never. The previous board never looked at it from that um as a possibility, but that's what's happening in real time. So yes, like J B County has um a permitting process, so yes, we we went and we already spent two years diving into looking at models. And and creating a process, um so we're talking about four permits, but the the that's not gonna grow exponentially. Um and and it wouldn't grow until there would be evidence that that's sustainable. And I can't imagine that we could even make that determination for quite some time.
Right.
So I don't think that the degree of permits would go beyond the four for. Uh quite a bit of time because we, you know, we need to gather that information and see what's sustainable. And then maybe open the door, um.
And potentially in the future, this would inform our like cop plan in another ten years.
Right.
Is how much our O H V use is, is how much we wanna grow and.
But it would be four permits on an annual basis, potentially then four permits every three years. So.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like creating a whole, I don't, I don't envision it creating um. I think the onboarding, the implementation is probably the heavy load.
Hmm.
And then, you know, this reoccurring permitting process. Um but but it's not, you know, it's nothing like the other permitting that. We do like short-term rentals or special events, which we'll talk about sometime. And um and building permits and, I mean, you know, those are, those are the kind of permittings that are the heavy lift, but these are. Um based on the ordinance would only be four.
Hmm.
There, now there is the potential, there's a new trend, uh you know, right now we have one more. Um that is coming in for, and that's why we had so much time talking. Um motorized, non-motorized, uh e-bikes are evolving into, and we're still trying to wrap our head around where do they fall? But as a non-motorized um use, they would be subject to the commercial recreation permit if they wanna do outfitting and guiding tours. In different locations, so there are occasionally non-motorized that would come in under the permit as well. If they wanted to do uh use the county roads. So it is a permit for commercial operations, recreation, with recreation-based use on county roads.
Anne, could I add one thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I I think a lot of the complexity right now is private property. Like this were just county roads that we're trying to permit, but what they need is permission to go on private property. For a lot of the, our commercial operations, right?
But that'd be on, that'd be the um. Right, right, but right now, the, that's more what we're covering in the conditional use permit process. On the commercial roadway permit, like we'll take care of that piece, right, we'll take care of the.
The C U Ps.
The C U P will wanna know that you have uh your routes if they're o- outside of the private parcel. Any privately owned parcel, you, or public, um you you have to have permissions to operate there.
Right.
So those are more our.
Yeah, but we were trying to process them concurrently.
Right, right, so this sets exist.
So I think that was kind of the holdup, the private property use was kind of holding up the C P application, so it's kind of a lot of us.
Right, at one point, we were hoping to package these to get, we just thought it would be easier for. The uh commercial operations to go through one process. And so as ever is, people were leaving the the county and we were kind of sitting there going, okay, well, we'll start trying to shepherd the implementation. There was the thought that we could go ahead for the first round and kind of package it all together.
Hmm.
So we were working, Cece was working diligently for six months. Um on working with each of the companies on uh the three that needed their conditional use permits. And then the the rec permit and doing them concurrently to just kind of for efficiencies. Um but yeah, it does bring up, it kind of then added, um when you tried to to work them all together, there are complexities. Um in doing that, it is, it kind of packages them nice, then they have one hearing. But again, I, there's the, there are barriers for us in being successful in the recreational roadway permits. We can do the C U Ps, um even if, you know, the outcomes mean that there's a little bit of adjusting, we're used to using, we're used. And you know, that's our lane and and we can manage that piece. Um but yeah, we had, there was a lot of attempts to try to put these together. And Cece, I certainly, do you have anything else that you'd like to share? No, I think um, yeah, the roadway maintenance agreement has been a big holdup.
That seems like the most complex controversial component of this. But it does seem a little unfair to me that we are trying to lump in the the companies that don't have anything to do with the roadway maintenance agreement. And with the roadway maintenance agreement companies, like trying to streamline it into one process. Um.
They all four need a, uh need a roadway permit.
Roadway maintenance, even if they don't operate.
Or not the roadway maintenance.
Yeah, that's the, the part to me that seems like the most tricky, like there, we need to have an entire session about that. With all the interested parties and stakeholders of keeping, the, the other part of this is like, this is kind of our our own fault. Cause we've ignored the O H V community and their usable area for so many decades now that. It's like we've got this one slice of pie up there, we're trying to figure out how to make it work for everybody. When we should have been expanding O H V trails for decades now, we wouldn't have this issue. But that's a different conversation for another time, right now, we gotta figure out how to make the best of what we got and it's, it's tricky.
And you think, my impression is that the roadway maintenance agreement is for the people who are sharing roadways up on the east side.
Yeah.
But everyone needs a roadway, road roadway maintenance or roadway permit?
Road.
Please tell us the word, Anne. Recreation roadway permit, I know.
Recreation roadway permit, so those are two, those are two different things.
Okay.
They're two different things and the maintenance agreement only talks about, it's only for two users.
Yeah.
Right, on, for the, for the east side, there's two users in the winter, for the contract that we just pulled in.
For the east side. Right. Right.
On the east side, there are two winter operators and there are two summer operators.
Hmm.
Um then there's county road nine, county road four and two parking lots. And so those just need same kind of agreement of are, in one instance, grooming is already occurring. There's, it's been going on for decades and again, I don't wanna speak for Michael. Um but he may find that is a a perfectly fine solution and the roadway maintenance agreement has a pathway forward for that. Um you know, so it just kind of depends on which area we're talking about. And how do we come to a solution for that part of the use? So each of them have a little bit different um uniqueness to them, they have different, you know, there's different locations. Um but the example that we used was a one groomer on the east side for the winter operations to try that this past season to see how that went.
Right.
Um and that was the, and with the understanding that the two users in that area would participate. In the cost of that for this year, this past winter season. Michael, how much permitting do you do?
I know driveways.
You just permit driveways?
Expletions.
Okay. Sweet, and we, on driveways, we do the paperwork.
Not at.
So we do, uh, just wondering like how new this program is for like your department, just want to just.
It'd be new for any, very new.
Yeah. It would be new for any department, it sounds like.
More.
Yeah.
And what would it take to just keep it in your department, like?
More staff.
Another staff person or a temporary staff person or a, dare I say, like a consultant or something could just come in?
Ed, who are you?
Do all this? Well, I don't see it working in any other department.
I, pros does not have the the expertise in this subject for sure.
Cause it, it seems to me there's a lot of work up front here and we're against, up against the deadline right here.
So I, I think the only other recommendation that I can think of, and this is just um coming out of nowhere. Um is, you know, for you to, there there would be no capacity in CPD to do this until we finish the cop plan.
When is that?
So um.
For the year.
End of the year.
Yeah.
Um for next year and even then, you know, I would really like to work with Candace about, um you know. We really gotta focus on our core essential services and all the other ancillary things that we're doing.
Hmm.
And just making sure that we have the proper staffing to make that successful. Um but definitely couldn't do that for the rest of the year, so if.
Yeah.
You want us to continue on with the conditional use permits and you wanna put a hold on the commercial recreation permit. Until there's more capacity, that's certainly also a a a a solution. Um that we continue to work with, um the companies on the conditional use permits so that those are in place. Um and the um, the one thing that I will mention is that this past year. Um I think there has, is coming to light that that maintaining the county roads. Um particularly in the winter on the east side can be challenging to ensure. Commercial operations and general use.
Yeah.
So that may continue on and um and but but we can put a pause. Um I think you certainly have the discretion to put a pause on the administration and implementation of the permits. Until there's more capacity and then we can continue on with the conditional use permits.
You can do, you can, with Ian's point, cause you can do the moratorium on the rec permitting part of it. Um without having a public hearing on that at this time, if you wanted to take it through.
We can make a decision during a work.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm just saying this is one of your op, we're just talking about potential options, so if you decided to go down that path.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
You could put a moratorium for the rec permitting side of it, um.
So what you do is you put a moratorium on the permitting, but the operating can still happen, you just don't, aren't required to have the permit to cover.
They just wouldn't have to go through the rec permitting part, they'd still have to go through the C U P process of going using the property and stuff.
Right, right. Right, yeah.
Well, the one component of this that I I would like to preserve is that we don't see ten more companies open up. And all try to jump on, you know, at the same time or whatever. Um so if we put a moratorium on this, does that open the door for work?
No, you you would, the, the pause would go in terms of not enforcing it, but also not allowing any new applications for it.
Okay.
You could do that, which is what the moratoriums we did in the past to give more time to consider this and to get.
Got it.
Feedback from the other stakeholders and stuff.
The goal is to try to do what's best for our existing businesses, you know, I think is where my mind is at.
The only thing that I would ask um for Candace and the board's help on is.
Hmm.
Wouldn't, when we receive those com- you know, concerns about um. You know, maybe conflicts, where should those go?
You mean like complaints from the community at large, user conflict stuff?
Yeah, to, to us, to commissioners.
Yeah.
For sure, we should definitely, you should be like, yo, go talk to your buddy.
Okay.
Talk about the stuff, okay.
Just so that we're, you know, um you know, whether um, you know, whether they be grooming concerns or, you know, user conflicts, those kind of things.
Yeah, especially during a moratorium, again, the point of a moratorium is for like people to take a moment and look at the landscape. And if, and if the decision makers aren't hearing about the landscape, there's no point to that moratorium, it's just kicking it down the road.
Perfect.
So yeah, have, send them to us.
Perfect, that sounds great.
If we did that.
Um. Data points and and how do we make the best decisions moving forward, I feel like I get conflicting accounts from different aspects. Different points of view on, you know, how many machines are up there, how many people on skis are actually up there? Do we have like any kind of way of finding a one solid source of data that everyone can agree on?
I think Cooper Mal- Malazi has, you know. I think Cooper Mo- Malazi has, you know, Cooper has some good um data. I think there's different groups that have um data that helped us um just as we were um during those, those two years. But I do think, you know, um, you can get counters out there, you know, these were things that, that Proz was talking about um to start, you know, getting some better data on use. Um, the commercial rep permits were.
Sorry, just got excited, what about Placer AI?
Yeah, they may be, he may be.
Because the only way you could be up there is through.
Right, so um.
Through these different access routes.
Um, Adam may be able to, you know, pull some of that um data from there. Um and, and that was the thought of the commercial rep permits was to have a better idea. Right now, you have, you know, there's no, you know, really kind of um, the conditional use permit will talk about it a little bit, but they also kind of wanted to have um, the permit was designed to create that data point as well. How many trips, how many machines, what type of machines and what's the volume?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So those were data collection points for, from a commercial standpoint, that the permits were hoping to provide. But, but those are some of the good things.
And that will be captured through the CUP or not, that would not.
The CUP will ask, um, well, the commercial recreation permit, I mean specifically got to
Which permit? Adam.
what's happening on the roads.
Yeah.
The um, the conditional use permit lets know what's happening on the land
On the land, yeah.
and we want to know that you have permission to operate outside of your parcel if you're operating outside of your parcel.
Yeah.
So if your routes include areas outside of your parcel, do you have permission to be on those routes? And that's what Melissa was talking about. So we look at that, I can, uh, um, from a conditional use permit. This was more a um permit designed to mitigate impacts directly to the roads, collect data on the usage on the roads and ensure contribution to the maintenance of the roads.
Yep.
Um, how much time do we have allotted to listen to what these guys have to say about all this? Cause that's kind of what I'd like to.
To thank you. Thank you, Adam, until then.
Okay, I think we should go around and listen to what everybody who's mostly affected by this has to say. So you guys want to start? White Mountain.
Yeah, sure, um. I mean, the fact that we're pointing out is White Mountain on the timeline there showing outfitters that still need to work on their CUP. We still believe we're in a unique position. Um, my dad started this company thirty-three years ago, our CUP that's current.
Yeah, it's also an ex parte.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but I think for the public comment part, it would be not, just, I know he said White Mountain, you want to start, but it'd be helpful just because we're recording this for y'all to say who you are and who you're with, that we're supposed to record.
Yes. My apologies.
But you also need to be cautious about this because if they do have a permit that's pending, that might come before you, um, it could be.
Oh, I know.
It's part of the, the only thing too is that this, this um suggestion that the, that this particular applicant would not be subject to a conditional use permit, um, just as we're opening this up just a little bit, we're not going to do anything that has any kind of ex parte um connotation to it. But um, the county attorney, the applicant's attorney, we have spoken, we have gone back numerous times. Um and the conditional use permit that is currently in place is for a land parcel off of ninety-one owned by um the, the uh current owner of the property and that is permitted. And what we're talking about for a conditional use permit is the Artonlinson parcel out below um the lake, which does not hold a conditional use permit. And we have been in conversation both with the county attorney and the applicant's attorney about that. So um, we will either agree to move forward with conditional use permit on that parcel or we'll work in, we'll move into enforcement on it.
Okay.
Okay, so outside of any pending permits, um, I feel like uh there is, the, the process itself, the permitting process itself is something that, I mean, I've talked personally with like, you know, half the people in this room and that was something you guys were hoping to see improved or like, you know, right now, like, you know, moving at the blazing speed of government, right now, you need to have your ducks in a row for next year's snow season pretty much, especially with machine purchases, things like that. So what I understood was that being able to figure out permits faster was something that you guys were really keen on?
The timeline has moved so many times and each year, it's like, it's gonna happen this year, it's gonna happen now. And planning for a bis, for these businesses, you're, you're ordering machines and equipment so far out. I mean, that's, these days it's taken even longer to get things in, like this constant back and forth, it's, it's hard to plan your business model. And we just, it'd be nice to know a little bit of password.
Mm-hmm, for sure, I hear that.
Moving to a three-year permit would probably be pretty helpful in those kind of situations as opposed to year by year?
I mean, definitely, but I mean, we have a ten-year forest service permit, so it'd be ideal, that would match.
Do you guys think that you wouldn't get your permit? Like, is there any reason why you think that your operations wouldn't be in line, in my own asset, right?
Words in, I, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, like.
You, yeah, I was gonna say, you have to be careful, because of the CUP aspect.
No, I just, maybe not, maybe not specifically for you all, but, but like, based on how the ordinance has been written, is there anything in the ordinance that seems really out of left field where it's like, whoa, we would be nervous about being able to acquire a permit year after year while this is implemented?
We're in belief that we already have a current permit, um.
Sure, just imagine you don't. Imagine you don't, okay? Just imagine you don't, is there any part of this permitting that's like, whoa, this is super weird, I, I hear you Ting, we'll get to you, we're just working on White Mountain for a second.
There's parts of the permitting that are very vague, that seem to leave the door open for a lot of interpretation for various boards to come through.
Okay.
And again, because we're planning so far out.
Yeah.
Like even, even right now, we're ordering sleds and it's, how long are these, how many years are these sleds? And what's like, we're talking five to ten years out of equipment plans, snow cats, tracks, all those things.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a lot of vagueness in the permitting that it, there's a lot of interpretation that could play a, play a role. And that, the gray area is not good for business.
Have you all submitted red lines of the ordinance to previous boards?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool, can you send those to us?
Yes.
Cool, now that we're here, cause it's mercurial, right? We elect, we elect three votes off the street every four years. Thank you. I get, I get that, like, I've worked in forests, I've worked in all sorts of permitting as well and I totally get that it's complicated, especially when you have a three-year permit here for this tiny little slice that you know you have to go through, but then you're on Forest Service land, but then you're on BLM. I mean, I, I get how cuckoo it is, for sure. And I wouldn't want to make it more complicated. And the point of the regulation is to make it better for everybody. Okay.
Theory.
That's the, that's the, I mean, other people, these are good outcomes.
It's the goal.
The outcomes, the, the intent that I'm hearing for why this went down, which was not my impression from the outside, starting in twenty twenty-two, my impression starting in twenty twenty-two was that it was like, oh, people just hate OHVs and they just think it's annoying and so they wanted to create an ordinance. That was my impression, not having been in it. And so I came into this chair being like, what is the point of this? And do we need all of it? But hearing some of those, those points to allow us to grow, those seem very good. Sorry, do we want to hear from other folks, any?
Yeah, yeah, um, anything else besides those vague red lines on permitting that you guys want to point out?
And timing.
I, I think right now we'll pause and I think we need to see where everything's at.
Cool.
Okay. Ting?
Yeah, um, I a hundred percent agree with White Mountain, so take level ATV tours.
Thank you.
Um, a hundred percent agree with White Mountain size. I think there are a couple of things in the ordinance that's super, super vague. One is about um, the maintenance agreements for the roadway. Everything is upon public work approval. So what exactly is approval criteria for public works? Um, because we want to be able to contribute with the grooming and everything. Um, but without knowing exactly what is public works and the board is looking for, it's very hard for us to actually contribute with grooming. And we wanted to, but we were specifically told not to, um, in order to follow the rules. But then it hurts everyone because the trails are less maintained. Um, so we would love more clarification about that. And back to Elsa's question about is there anything that we see that we might not be able to get a permit year over year or over the course of three years? So why is the, the vagueness about the road maintenance agreements? Cause three percent of the gross sales is just way too much. I don't know what everyone else's profit margin is, but three percent is a lot. Um, and then the other two option with the designated amount or contribute with grooming is just very much open to for interpretation without any real clear guidance about the clear approval criteria. So then the other thing about it is, I think the last part of the ordinance is about um community complaining and enforcement. I don't, I don't know exactly the exact wording and, but there's a section where it says you can report behavior to the sheriff or like there's a, yeah, and if you don't mind to pull it up. Like, I, it's towards the end where it says there is a area where the board will hold a hearing regarding specific complaints about the outfitters and then talk about possibly revoking the permitting based on the complaints the board or the sheriff receives.
I think.
I can read, um, the, I think, maybe it's citations, law enforcement officers may issue citations to new persons,
Thank you. Yes.
Person or persons or representatives of commercial operations suspected of having violated this ordinance. In instances where a violation has been witnessed and recorded, a law enforcement offer, officer is authorized to issue a citation to the violator.
It does.
Citations shall include the following information. So these are, this is just in the um, it's in the penalties part of the ordinance um about citations from law enforcement.
Yes.
So if someone needs to witness something and then a citation can be issued based off of.
They make a report to law enforcement for that.
A re, isn't it?
But same look like if you saw somebody crossing on a double yellow, you can issue a statement to law enforcement and they can issue a citation.
It's not room for.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say the officer shall, they, cause they're authorized to, so they still have.
That's dis, that's disquestioning.
Where's the, the, the actual evidence still in that?
And that's uh saying, I know, that's something Heath and his office has been working on too and how it relates to the existing model traffic code and updates and that type of thing as well.
Hmm.
Like as a resident, what I'm seeing, the bad apples, it's not the guiding companies. You know, like there might be volume issues, there might be user conflict, stuff like that, but like, you know, it's the, the, the kids ripping up and down the street on Clapdown, eighty's doing wheelies through, you know, pedestrians and stuff, that's not, that's not these guys, I'm just wondering.
It's in the whole ordinance, it, it's not only pertaining to commercial.
Yeah, that is.
They're saying anybody using.
Yeah, it's both general, that, so that applies to those, it's not just to these folks.
Yeah.
It's not the operator.
It's everyone and, and it is authorized, but is not a shall. And he's just here, if he has any other comment that he'd like to.
Have you issued any citations, Ting?
Yeah, no. Um, but yeah, this falls underneath, like you said, uh, related to traffic violations. If we have a witness who's willing to testify in court to the actions that they saw, that we have that authority to issue a citation.
Thank you, the citation is that the sheriff's office, this is for OHVs being where they're not supposed to be like on the bypass. Where we have to go and fix it like that after we get there.
So anyways, so that part, like, it was a little bit unclear to us and we're a little bit concerned about the loudest crying babies for that one or two person that really doesn't like commercial OHV for whatever reason might have an impact for the renewal of our permitting. Cause if you're saying, okay, if you have commercial OHV caught on camera doing donuts, flipping machines recklessly or like going fifty miles an hour down the road, if you have like a clear line to say these are the things that your permitting can be revoked, I think that's more than fair. Um, however, just saying violation of the current ordinance, I mean, like, we'll never go down the bypass, we won't even fit there. Um, but like, it's just, it's not very clear to us the way that um, that part is wr, written. And we're concerned about one or two person that really doesn't like us for whatever reason that, I don't know, but you know, that could happen. Then if they're crying super loud to the board, then are we gonna worry about our permitting not being able to renew for a very unclear reason?
We had some clarity on that too, or just, just, just some, um, so two ways. One, we're talking about traffic code violations, um, and he spoke to that.
Mm-hmm.
But if the, so there's, there's, we really heard that Ting when, when we were going through the work. Um, and so we, we built in two different ways. Um, one is an administrative process, we receive, whoever the permit administrator is, they receive that complaint, they work directly with the company to find a resolution to it. If they're unable to find a resolution, then it gets referred to the board, but it's, it's called a show cause hearing. And at that time, the operator has just as much um, uh, ability to come in and explain to the board the nature of what happened. The board does get to make a decision about the, the status of the permit, but, but it's not just an arbitrary yank because someone complained, uh, revocation. So, so there is, we really wanted to make sure that we created that transparency in, in the regulations and that opportu, opportunity um for the company. I mean, they have obviously, um, and, and largely we do hear that they're, they are good players and they do these things. So first, we wanted to try to just do it administratively, work through it, everybody has a bad day, something happens. And, and work together, we get things back on track and everything's good. If it escalates beyond that, then you have an opportunity as the operator, the public has an opportunity and the board gets to kind of go through that with you. So there's no um automatic revocation process within the ordinance or the permit itself.
So, and that's super helpful, would you mind, like, you guys are probably the ones that hear the most about the community for OHVs, um, can you give us some examples about previous complaints you heard from the public about commercial OHVs that you would think that would um start the process of this show cause hearing?
That's a great question.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think things like, you know, trash or parking or being in locations that they, that um, uh, aren't permitted or they shouldn't be, maybe there's a question about trespass, things like that. Those are things that we could reach out and say, hey, listen, we've heard X, Y, and Z. We can hear something completely different. I think things that would escalate and go before the board is evidence that there are life safety issues, that there are unsafe practices, um, that, you know, those are the kind of things that um I would think that the permit administrator would want to make sure that go before the board. We have a situation that's affecting the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And it's not just, hey, maybe we could tighten things up a little bit. Um, but, but those are the kind of things that I think escalate into um, times that, that we need to bring everyone together in front of the board and have a conversation about what's happening. And, and Keith had his hand up too.
Yes, back to that, uh, the question of concern about, I think he's the point of, of regoping the permit on the criminal side. Uh, there's a legal violation, uh, there's still some clauses in place where you can go to court and argue a citation that was issued to be closed unjust. But even before we get to that point, law enforcement would look into the integrity of the situation for a citation that is issued. You want to make sure that you're right, you can't go to court if something like that goes on.
Okay, cool, that's helpful. And do you?
Yeah, if I could, um, I'm Nate also with Blood Bill and you too, it's my. Guess my statement.
Guess my statements or comments are just a little more general or permitting, you know, what are we three years? Into this and here here we are, this ordinance is a permit, all of this, before we ever had a sign or a map. Or some more simple suggestion, because in previous conversations here, we weren't just talking about commercial outfitters. To your point, we're very motivated to be well behaved out there, permit or not.
Hmm.
Um it's our benefit to be well behaved and safe. We're talking about, you know, you can rent these razors, which are like race cars anywhere and come into our town and just rage. Um and where we are located, I get so many questions, especially in the summer, where can I go? What can I do, what can't I do? We try and be good stewards to that, but once they leave our office, you know, what am I gonna do? We see people misbehaving on the trail, we call them out. Um but has anybody had some fun at Four Mile, seen their big sign down in D B? It's awesome, I would go take a look at it, it's here's how you operate here in this area. Um here's the things you don't do, and they have a cute funny fun way of saying, don't dust out mountain bikers, don't, you know. We had a sign like that at each kinda access point, I think it would go a long way. They also have a map stuck in there.
Hmm.
It's tricky without any actual staging area, you know, cause we kinda have like dispersed spots where people can kinda park.
Sure.
Um where Four Mile has that benefit of those those actual loading ramps staging.
Yeah, you're right.
Again, this is probably a shortcoming of the county for having neglected our, you know, the O H V conversation for so long. Like now we're kinda playing catch up, but hopefully we can make some progress on things like this, that's a good point.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, you're right, I don't have it all figured out, but I just think there's some more simple things that we could probably. Get some low hanging fruit done with um before we got here, but I mean here we are, so let's figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a shame when people in these chairs think that the first thing they have to do is go straight to a regulation instead.
One, another thing I brought up is the youth education, I mean that's huge, cause I totally agree, we aren't doing really stuff in the street.
Yes.
Yeah.
Some of the kids are, and I I look at them just as a, oh my gosh, that kid does not have a helmet on and he's.
Spark arresters, there's so many bikes out there in our community that don't even have spark arresters on them, which terrifies the crap out of me because it's. You know, you lay down a a four stroke, that header bike can light a fire, you know, like four fifty or two, whatever.
Sure, yeah.
It's a good, it's a wonderful point. I do think one of the previous, some of the previous boards have like tried to use the motocross track as that. That end point, like using public land to try to manage, mitigate, educate, et cetera. And I think that we kind of lost track of that as a as a governing body.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
I can add, I think this has come up a few times, it's not like how we got to this point or like having this regulation. And before this all came to to be, John was always told that. Like the Forest Service or those other agencies would be governing it, and I think that's why it was never in the county's hands. And that's what it sounds like, I'm not gonna say too much, cause it sounds like that's maybe a discussion for our attorneys that need to touch on, but. That's, that seems to be the disconnect understanding is that before the board took this on. It was always an understanding between the county and those agencies and the operators that it would be on those other people outside of the county.
I think you guys are maybe in a little bit more of a unique situation with the Forest Service, you guys are the only ones that have Forest Service permits?
I can't answer that, no.
Okay, um and I think what where what has come to light with um. Uh how do I dance around that rules on that? Well, there's there might be, there might be other permits that have have come to light that need to happen.
Especially to.
I think Johnson, uh the not Johnson Village, Jesus, I'm down at Four Mile, we were just talking about it, um.
Leadville Junction.
Leadville Junction, yes.
How did you get this?
Yeah, did you get this, Leadville Junction, uh I think is the one that kinda popped up that sort of was like, oh, we gotta figure this out, so.
I know, I know.
That's.
Which we, I think so, I yeah, I think I think we need to follow that.
And I.
I mean, it's O H V is in the entire, it's in the entire county, right?
Yeah, and.
We're we're finally looking at it in the entire county, and so people who are operating in ways that seemed fine. Or that like decades ago seemed fine, they're gonna get caught up in it, cause we're trying to look at the whole thing. It's the same with gr- when we talk about grooming, yeah, maybe we care about boarder grooming, but we're also gonna be talking about bike grooming. And we're gonna be talking about, uh you know, grup grup grooming.
Snowmobiles, U T Vs with tracks.
Snowmobile grooming. Yes, thank you.
Snow bikes, e-bikes.
Okay, so you went in that one.
E-e snowbike.
The the point is that like once you start talking about one thing, it catches, it catches everybody up in the conversation to make sure it's all equitable, right?
Which is reasonable, I would just ask that everybody's mindful of an engaging conversation throughout the process, instead of there being surprises.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, I mean, if we had been here for the last three years, if the three of us had been here, I think this would have been a different conversation. But since we just got here and this is what we've been handed, I think it's just gonna look a little.
If we do say so ourselves.
Yeah, I I feel pretty confident that we would have had a different approach.
I know, I feel like we need to try and fig- now we need to figure out how to move forward, because make a plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
That works for everybody.
More rolling street roads.
Okay.
Ross, my, I have to back this, add a couple of things, my name is Ross Music, I'm with the High Riders Snowmobiling Club and Colorado Snowmobiling Association. And if it helps any, like Colorado Parks and Wildlife can still pursue and enforce not having a registration on motorized vehicle. If you're on a national forest land, it's still like a ranger, but they technically can't pursue, but they can still issue. Warnings and fines, which takes place like say about pass, right? Um and then we too too have to have our permit renewals every five years to do anything on like national forest lands. So just to convey, if anybody goes off of a county road, say at Turquoise Lake, there's a boat ramp or a cat ramp, you have to have a permit. And you're making, and I'm not even an outfitter, making money on pub- on public land, I still have to have that. So that that's if that helps you a little bit about enforcement scope and how it's kinda, those entities are still there. This is just more of what's taking place on county assets, I guess you could say. Um you know, I really appreciate the county, like you know, still doing everything that they do, providing this, and just closing things off. Um another segue that I can convey to other county members, how what this was a little based off was Grand Lake. They don't have a lot of tourism in the winter. They base theirs upon sled usage and or fee or percentage, and that's what a lot of other communities are doing now, so that's. Kind of where this idea came about, it's good to have kind of everybody in the room so they know where the grooming funds are going. It's just not, we mean, we take this money and leverage it through grants to buy the equipment to do the grooming.
Hmm.
Um so it's not like we have a president who buys a yacht this one year, and it just doesn't take like. I'm more than happy to share, like I will ask you guys partners, we are partners with you, write a letter and we submit that grant. And we need to be really proud of what we're working on, what we're accomplishing, and that goes a long way for us to win, it's it's a point based system. We are, in the system for what we provide, we are kinda falling behind the times. There are some clubs that come in with cash of a hundred grand to get new equipment, and that's really getting hard, like. We're we're running our equipment to the point where it's maybe hard to maintain. Um not even feasible, no trade in value and whatnot. So in what I've mentioned and maybe not everybody has heard, that what we receive for this money is allocated. And it will simply go straight to the next replacement cat is in the mining district. Um so it's so the it should just be, you know, more consistent, better product and what have you. So I I just wanted to throw that out there, kinda like what we do with that money, how we kinda came about it. We leverage this money and bring this money in the community and stays in, and then there's other ways we try to leverage this money with others. Um so that's just it, so it's something else that would help, I I get, I understand your. So we have, we're allocated, it's a grant, we get so much money. Um and then we do basically break it up in three sections, is the mining district, turquoise lake, and St. Keven's. Um so if you wanna know, I I'm more than happy to share like the hours that were. There were extra hours that we allocated with the funds for the mining district this year. So obviously, it's hard to quantitate, like hours on a cat, that's easy, the product is hard because of uses of snow conditions. But I'm more than happy to be transparent, I gave the county um what what we did this year in each section. So you can see there was a lot of extra grooming, just sometimes it's the trail lasts longer and sometimes it doesn't. It's a very challenging area in the mining district, there's no trees, for shade, it's not asphalt, it's not graded, there's rocks, you can't start super early. Um it's a very difficult area of grooming anywhere else in the county, unfortunately. But it has some of the amazing views and just wanna partner with everybody, so if you have any. So every year that we don't, and receive this extra money, we we just don't get it back, but we're doing the hours on the equipment. That's all I just wanted to add, and I appreciate everybody.
Ross, the last time you were in here, this you said something about Vale Pass getting shut down too.
Um they're gonna, so that's the other thing, I guess all the everybody needs to understand in that with the National Forest cut, National Forest cutbacks. Um there is also the, their funding is probably gonna drive as well. We've already heard and seen how many people have left our National Forest Rangers stations and how they're getting consolidated. So yes, most likely, that grooming allocation will not be allocated like they do have their fee pay site. Um so that's what they'll still have, but if the plowing's not there, which is. It which limits, and if the there's less plowing, they're gonna go to other places, if there are less grooming, they're gonna go to other places. So this affects other clubs in my district, Holy Cross Powder Hounds on the Avon, which is the uh West Sandstone Road in Val. Some of the snow riders rooms in Green Mountain Reservoir, and then what Leadville here. So we're gonna see, we're gonna see maybe an uptick if their grooming and parking diminishes in the next few years with the National Forest.
Hmm.
Um and that and that and that kinda stays the same, that is also kind of what we modeled here. Is like a little bit of what the National Forest does, where Lake County hadn't had something like this, so a lot of people were coming here for businesses or were already here. But that this is kinda like the status quo on public lands, so I would imagine that's more private tiers. You've already kinda put a stop on new outfitters coming to the county, so. Um yeah, we'll just have to see how that goes. We'll we'll just have to gauge it and see how things go over the years, yeah, but we're not gonna get new outfitters most likely because of the ordinance.
Can I add one more point?
Hmm.
About the maintenance plan, um another thing that didn't make a lot of sense to us about this past year's grooming was. Snowmobile club was twelve grand for grooming the east side, um but then um. We decided to have a clean cut in the middle, say each business is six grand for the one, the two that use the east side. If we're really talking about contributing and adequately allocating these kind of efforts. I think it would make a lot more sense, instead of just a clean cut, half and half, gave like allocates the twelve grand. By proportion of the number of vehicles that goes out on the tour, cause you guys are gonna have that information in hand. The other outfitter, they have, I don't know, but like they have at least thirty vehicles. We have four to six vehicles, and they're just run significantly bigger volume by the number of vehicles. By the number of tours or by revenue versus us, so like six grand for them is a drop in the bucket. For us, we only have like four vehicles most of the season and six at the busy times, so.
That's a really, that's a really good point, Ting, like other permitting is based on user days, right? And so being able to establish like how many user days each person is actually paying for makes sense.
So I would say there's two points, there there it's a little deeper than that.
Sure.
This is super important that we capture this right here and now.
Yeah.
So the general public, say you're non-motorized, there's a huge thing of I'm seeing motorized vehicles, right? And it's the reps and how many, right?
Hmm.
Then the other side of this that is super duper important is is the impact pounds per square inch to the snow.
Hmm.
So you could have forty snowmobiles run, or you then you can have something that's way heavier and actually do considerably more damage to the track.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to stress that I'm looking at it as like the operator of grooming and maintaining. It's not about volume, it's about, to me in my world, it's about the condition, what I have to fix and how it led to that condition.
Sure, yeah, I'm saying, wh- what I'm saying user days, it depends on the use, right? Like so a user day, you may have one person running a razor versus one person, I don't know the differences, but I know what they look like. And you, so a user day would have to, would have to consider like, oh, are you pulling a sled behind?
Okay, that's all, yeah.
Are you pulling, is it just one person on one vehicle, et cetera, et cetera. It's just like you would have different user managements for like a horse packing outfitter versus a backpacker.
Okay, yeah.
So I hear, I totally hear you.
Yeah, most of it's the temperature for the night before, so if we groom at seven, it sets up and freezes.
Yeah.
And that's great, and if it's a warm night that doesn't happen and set up, and then the next day, one snowmobile vehicle could just sink in the spring and cause a groove. It is what it is, so that's all I wanted to convey, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Ross, in this memo from Ann, there's a lot of points here, one of them is tracked O H V. O H O H Vs damaged, ruined trails and should be disallowed, what does that mean? I'm not.
So I, so as it as it goes, like a snowmobiler, uh one snowmobile, there's two people on it, that's a typical like outing. And the pounds per square inch is is very minimal, and if there's a high volume, basically all you get is is these rollers in the in the. In the snow, right, it's kinda bumpy, they call them whoops, right? And it's not a lot of fun, and the other side of things, what a razor causes is because of the weight, whether even, doesn't matter how many per people you have in it. They sink and they cause like a a groove that's continuous. And then usually I see these on like lower elevations at the start of a trial where it's colder, where there's less snow. And those go on and and those, those have its own impact, but they're. They, I would say, depends on your user, which one you may say is worse, but as an operator. Um then it's it's it could be more, it's more challenging. But my point to groom in those 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 groups, but my my biggest point about. About the uh the weight is of the A T Vs, it can just happen instantly. You know, it it takes a lot of volume, days and usage to get the rollers, but with an A T V on a hot day, it can happen on the first run out. So just envision like these little whoops, but you gotta think what's more dangerous, is this consolidate, is this consistent line down the trail? Or the occasional bumps in some in in the corners at the start of some trail, it's so. That's that's not for me to say, it's just what you might hear in the community, that's what everybody's talking about.
Jason, did you have something else?
Uh Jason, Leadville Lock Road Ventures, um we run a cat out at the lake as well. The trails, and I know Ross knows this, he's trying to be, you know, very nice, but we used to run U T Vs on the east side. At a very small volume, you know, two machines, three machines, okay, at a time. When you have long trains of U T Vs, you put ten times the amount of work into those trails. Okay, I've been an operator for twenty-five years, I know what it takes to make these snowmobiles. There's a reason we got out of the east side with U T Vs, because the trails to me, and I and I think everyone forgets all this stuff. We have all these things about that we're concerned about in the permitting and and all that stuff, fine. But I think the whole thing that's been lost here is is we were trying to maintain some semblance up on the east side. Between commercial use, public use, right, and then non-motorized, okay?
Hmm.
And when we operate in these huge groups like that, it's not fair to a cross-country skier or someone walking their dog or or something like that. In the summertime, we run four U T Vs, maybe if we get a big group, you know, we'll bring in a fifth one for the guy, right? But what we're we're having here is, yeah, there's a lot of talk about, you know, the cost of grooming, I I can tell you. But what we're, we're having here is, yeah, there's a lot of talk about, you know, the cost of grooming, I, I can tell you right now, the UTV is the biggest cost of grooming up there. Okay, the snowmobiles, you go up once a week, it freezes nicely like Ross said, you don't have to groom it once a week. With UTVs, as a UTV operator, right, I can tell you right now, they cause the most damage to the snowmobile trails. Because we don't have the same damage out at the lake, right? We kinda all coexist, White Mountain, myself, Snowmobile Club, if we even see a little bit of bumpiness, one of us is on it, right? Up here, yeah, they might have thirty, forty snowmobiles, but I guarantee they can run those snowmobiles all week, there's gonna be no damage. But to me, the whole thing that's lost is, we need to like have this idea that we are operating with all these other people in the community, okay? Not just thinking about how much money can I make, how much machines can I throw out there, okay? Some places like White Mountain, they're ten times our size, right, but they've been doing it for thirty-five years, and we added the extra volume, right? When we came in and started businesses here. So I think if we just operate in a, in a way that's like, is, you know, it has the idea that we all need to get along up there, we all need to look out for each other, which was why when we started, we started a small UTV company. So yeah, we provide a great opportunity, we look out for the community, but when we're up there, we're not operating in a way that we have people complaining. We have people calling the sheriff, right? We, we have all these things that are, are issues that were never issues before, right? We, before, when, when, when it was just a few machines up there, okay? You don't need a trail of fifteen machines going up to the pass, right? It's just, it's not fun for anybody, and it takes away the ambiance that the east side has, right? Up at the lake, totally different story, yeah, is it busy on a Saturday? Sure. But we don't operate the way where people out there cross-country skiing are all upset with us, right? Because we keep the trails nice, we're super respectful of all the other people out there that are using it, right? So I just think we've kinda lost that in this whole thing, and the former board, when they came in, that's what, that's what caused all this tension and everything. Was that there was, yes, the complaints were starting to go up, people were operating in a way that you have to care about your community, not just your business, because your business is part of the community. If you don't look at it that way, then you probably shouldn't be operating. Now, if you can't see the damage that's done, you know, then, you know, maybe you should contribute more. Buy a snowcat, they're expensive, as Ross can attest to, they're not cheap to run, about two hundred and fifty bucks an hour.
What I'm wondering is, uh, Mike, I mean, we use a UTV for grooming in certain situations. That, what's that, the Ginsu that's on the back of that?
Yeah.
Why, uh?
We use it mainly so far, a little bit up on the Middle Belt Trail, but basically at the golf course. And use it, do it for skiing, you know, cross-country skiing, um, and that's basically what it's been used for. Um, we just purchased it last year for that purpose.
What kind of an asset is that, like, wear and tear wise? Could that be something that could be in lieu of like, um, some of these, you know, three percent payments or, or whatever for this roadway maintenance agreement? Could it be utilized by a guiding company, like, hey, run your sweep UTV with a Ginsu, and that would help? No? Okay, don't laugh at me, I'm just throwing ideas out there, because, you know.
I mean, we have a BR two seventy-five, and you have a one eighty, and that almost doesn't even cut it. And that, that, that doesn't.
Just, just in regards to the tracks the UTV are leaving, it doesn't.
It doesn't even have the weight or the horsepower.
A Ginsu wouldn't, wouldn't sweep up what the damage that's being done?
Eighty percent of your grooming isn't a blade, it needs to be at least like ten to twelve feet long, so not even, it, it's not even close to like the damage, like it won't even, it's gonna get stuck itself going out earlier, going up.
So why do we even have one then?
Well, no, because it's, it, it works because there's no, you have the Ginsu in the ATV because you're going in a place that had no, no motorized. It's a, and so you're using, you bought the tool for a specific job which was appropriate, just pack down fresh snow, and there's almost no impact to that snow. You need a, a basically a full-size snowcat to take on, somebody's gotta open up the top of the run, you know what I'm saying, at, at the, yeah, uh, yeah.
Can I, can I just say something for a second? Just, just listening to this is really interesting. It's um, it's wild to be trying to take on a permitting process as a county who does not have this information in-house. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just observing that like, in, in Forest Service, you have specific folks who are only permitting specific user groups. And that's like their bread and butter, like they, they have decades of experience, and from CPD, from PROS, from um, uh, like Public Works. I'm just, I'm feeling a little worried that we don't actually have a strong pipeline of like information to be able to manage this. We don't have a, we don't have the person in-house, and also the cost of this will be a lot to try to get that in-house. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to pause for a second and acknowledge like part of the reason that, one of the things that Ann asked us to do was to talk about the workload of this entire thing on our staff. So I just wanted to, I don't know, hear, Candace, what are your thoughts about listening to this conversation and how it impacts our staff?
I think I haven't been a part of this really until now.
Yeah.
Um, we, we do need to have a good plan in place and know who can handle the process, and I don't know that I have that answer in this moment, too.
Okay, sorry, Andy.
No, that's fine, I think, you know, what, where I was at was that, one of our favorite topics in this room, grooming, because it seems like a lot, you know, a lot of it kinda stems from this, you know, whether it's cross-country ski stuff, or you know, now we're talking about OHVs, and it's like, our snow is a really valuable asset, and it's valuable for many user groups, you know, it's not just the Nordic skiers, sorry, not, or the, the snowboarders, or, but you know, and how do we preserve that, especially if we're gonna see a potential increase in users from, you know, other areas that are under different situations now, like Vale Pass, um.
And is it an asset we wanna continue to leverage more? Like that's also part of this conversation.
Are we gonna need it, yeah, for like future economic development aspects?
We gotta diversify.
Um, so I feel like just the grooming situation alone as a whole.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
Um, aside from that, right now, I mean, that's kinda part of this conversation, but right now, we're just in this OHV ordinance. I'm.
Pete's got something to say if you want.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
That's all right, that's all right, you were a doc, finish, finish what you're talking.
Uh, sometimes I start to ramble, so you, so you're a lifeline when I, I need to stop rambling sometimes, Pete. Um, I think what I was just gonna go with that is, um, you know, how, how do we even move forward with this OHV thing? And I'm leaning on, on the moratorium until we can make better decisions with better data and more input from everybody. And that's just where my head's at right now with the, the OHV ordinance discussion, um, that's it, go ahead, Pete.
So, um, you know, there's a whole lot to unpack here, and I probably need to have an individual conversation with one or all of you, but, because I've been, been involved with this, this ordinance drafting, you know, from the, you know, from the, from the beginning. But, you know, don't lose fact of sight of the, of the other issues, the, the youth education, the model traffic code. There were items that were taken out of the ordinance because they were gonna go into a model traffic code, which was gonna come out at about the same time, and, and that never happened. Signage hasn't been discussed, that was, you know, something that came up from the, from the public, and the county was gonna work on, on the signage that was, you know, that was talked about, you know, but wherever that is, Chatham County has, you know, just even thinking about that. And then, um, what was the other issue? Um, um, you know, it's just that, that, you know, grooming is, is one thing, type of machines is another item. You know, this whole, you know, other set of information about what the public, you know, wanted and, and, and indicated and was expecting, you know, hasn't happened yet. So it seems like you oughta decompartmentalize this and, um, you know, put it into separate bins and talk about each one of these issues separately. And, because I don't want you to lose sight of, uh, you know, the youth education part, you know, Ann recounted, you know, a few weeks ago about a scary incident that she had, um, you know, and, and enforcement. Um, so, you know, that may be something that's handled in, in PROS, you know, versus the, you know, the grooming information and the permitting, which might be handled by somebody else. I don't think it's a one, it's a one-stop shop, I think, you know, different groups need to, you know, tackle different, different pieces of this.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, so I would encourage you to, to move forward and not, you know, not, not just talking about snow quality, but talk about all the issues, but maybe in, in different, in different settings, because it gets to be, you know, just too, too, too much. The other thing I'll say is that, um, you know, the fact that no permits have been, have been issued, no permits have even come before you, no conditional use permits have come before you, that's a land, land use code violation. You know, there's just no reason that there shouldn't be conditional use permits in place. You know, it's been, well, there's the moratorium, then, you know, the ordinance development, it's been, some of these operators are years out of compliance with having to have a, a conditional use permit, and I just think that's unconscionable, and I, and maybe there are conditions that could be put on it that might have, you know, um, you know, be different for different operators, but I think those need to come before you as soon as possible. You know, I just don't know why a conditional use permit should be delayed another three or four months. Call them in thirty days, have the operators come and, and tell you what the issues are, and either approve them, deny them, or prove them with conditions. But letting them languish is, 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 you know, just kind of, um, I mean, delay is a tactic. And the fact that there aren't permits, and there aren't, there aren't a use for roadway permits, and there aren't conditional use permits, is, is, in my opinion, a lame tactic, that CPD has been very, very patient with. I know that this has been a hard process for them over the years, they've taken a lot of abuse, you know, from a lot of different parties over, over this ordinance and the moratorium and everything, and everything else, so, so I commend them for their patience, but, you know, it's, it's time. It's time to drop the hammer and require conditional use permits, especially maybe you put a moratorium on the, on the, uh, the roadway permits. Um, but frankly, you know, Ann went through the requirements to get a permit, they just aren't that hard. You know, most of it's information, it's information you're looking at, you know, the results of the permit is gonna give you, give you the information on usage, on number of vehicles, um, you know, all that information is gonna come from reporting under the permit. And so you want more information, but you don't have a mechanism to get it, except you have the permit, which is a mechanism to get it. So, so I don't, you know, I think you should get the CUPs called in and, and, and work on the permits individually as a board and, and decide what should, what should happen, but just this delay tactic, you know, frankly, is, you know, just not helping anybody. Not helping the operators have any, any long-term planning ability, and they're kinda worried about, you know, what might happen, you know, if they, you know, if they don't get renewed for a permit, frankly, they're not even gonna permit it yet, so, so they're operating at a risk, you know, by not even having the original permit, so let's move the process forward.
Thanks, Pete.
Anyone else in the room have anything to add to this?
Just for, just for education, if you will, to keep in mind, if you go down the route of moratorium, the OCC can pass a moratorium, if you will, for up to six months.
Uh-huh.
One of the concerns we had with the moratorium the last time is the six-month period where it would fall, it'd be right in the middle of the all season. And so that would be, you don't have to do it for the full six months, but I would, I would just suggest y'all consider that in terms of the, the impact on the operators, if you have a moratorium that you're gonna run for six months, say June through the end of the year, on the road, the rec permitting part of it, that might not be in best interest, but you can't do any longer than six months at this point in time. Now, you can do one, uh, moratorium for a shorter period of time if you wanted to, and then extended if you wanted to, but you can't do like, oh, we're just gonna do a moratorium for the next year without going through a public hearing process on that, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Just for anybody to be aware, yeah.
I just feel like we're like at the five-carat line, right? And I've just been through this for so many years, you know, and a lot of people have dedicated so much time. We're so close, we all work together so well, and it, I feel like we're just at this what-if? Well, let's just try to address the what-if and put it in writing, because I think it's dragged out so long. We can just give answers to the individual four and say, hey, this is it, this is, this is, you know, we told you different ways at different times, from different people, but maybe just clean slate, do board, take them on, there's only four groups, answer their question, give it in writing, and just, and just be done with this, because we've come so far, we're so close, and it's so amazing, and it's just amazing we already have like a motorized and non-motorized. Let's just see this through.
I got too worried about the road.
I think our white, just good shutout.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't get to see that all the time. Like right now, after the season, is when I need to go check roads to see what damage we have. In the interim, the mud season, you know, what happened because we went too long to our roads? What do I gotta do to repair those roads next year? Um, see, I, I don't get to see that all winter long, I, I see pictures of what damage was done here, and damage was done there, or somebody got stuck here, and now you gotta go fix the bike path because of that. Um, but I don't see the damage that happens until like springtime, and I just haven't had a chance to go, and what can I get? And it, and it's not just one user, it, you know, it can be all of them, because they all technically use county roads. But, you know, you can change rules all the time, laws change all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to like just outline what, what the last steps are, and if they really can't be done, then, okay, you know, then, then you pivot. But moratorium is more of a limbo, I think, on that, in my opinion, the outfitters and my group, and that's just kind of a bummer.
Yeah.
I'd rather just make the best of it however it rolls out and adjust it.
Part of that moratorium was a, a limit on no more licenses available, right?
That's already in the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance is in effect, so if you don't do, you don't need the moratorium to preserve that.
To preserve the ordinance.
Right, because the ordinance is already in place.
Okay.
So this is just, the moratorium would be only to determine how your permitting would be handled internally in session.
But there's no capacity to, we, we, we're struggling with how, who's gonna implement?
We'll have to, and that's something maybe, um, Candace, we can get the team together and kinda talk through how that is, is talking about. Maybe it's, it, it is not just delegated to one, but there's certain parts that are handled by different departments.
Maybe we could have a, we could chat about that in our next operation meeting. Candace, some of your thoughts and which, maybe you're in a prioritization of which particular ordinance is in the, when? Cool.
I don't know, maybe you know what to add to this, I've got, the, the UT, the tracked UTV thing and how that affects grooming is something we need to have further discussion on, we're out of time for today, but like, it's not just, it's not singling anyone in this room out. It's, you know, we're gonna have those, they're gonna be here, it's private users, that we can't, I don't think we're allowed to say, you can't use this machine. So it's the, this, the conversation is how do we fix that? How do we repair, or how do we keep the trails in good shape while these things are being used? Yeah, I think.
Just thirty seconds.
Yeah.
On the tracked UTV, so.
On the track UTV. So the ground pressure for the track UTV is about twenty to thirty percent higher than a traditional snowmobile. So we're not talking about like could you calling the ground pressure on the snow trail? That's for one. And then for two, the ground pressure of a human footprint is about four times higher than a snowmobile. So if we're talking about track UTV, there's a lot of damage to the trails or we're gonna ban people from walking on the trails. Um, thirdly, lastly, we also have a tour company in Alaska where we use, um, snow pad for grooming and also track UTV for grooming. We do that all winter long with the tracks UTV with a drag. If you know what you're doing, you stay on top of it, do it more often. Very much doable. That's what we do in Alaska every single year. No issue whatsoever. If you wait for a dump of three feet of snow and don't groom in the meantime, of course, it will get stuck. A trail staff will get stuck with two people on that too, you know? So you just have to know what you're doing and stay on top of it. Um, so just say the tracks UTV does the most amount of damage for the trails. It is a very much a misconception, um, misunderstanding for a lot of people that in this community have without actual science facts behind it. And we actually looked into manufacturer requirements and stuff like to have the science behind it, which is twenty percent more than a tr- traditional snowmobile. If you could put two fat people on a snowmobile, that's gonna cause two more damage on the trail than a tracks UTV. You're just like, it's just the numbers.
Yeah, I think the next conversation isn't gonna be like where you guys need to defend yourselves. It's gonna be about how do we keep the trails in good shape?
And we all have the...
Because there's private users out there using, you know, other things like say, maybe it's a snow bike next time. It's the next conversation. Who knows what, you know, I mean, it's... So there's things that are gonna damage the trails. I think what we, what would be best for us is to figure out how do we keep them in good shape? No matter what's happening to them. Not like, hey, lose that fall. It's more of like, how do we fix it?
And from my perspective, it's, it's rough, right? Grooming and trying to make everybody happy. That's just how communities are. But I'm okay the way things are, right? Because it's, it's, it's out of my control. I deal with what I have, what I, what we find and see on the trail. So I don't think there's a need to dive in to change anything, anybody's business operations. I think that that would be too much to limit UTVs and die down that rabbit hole, eating in the weeds. I'm okay for my point. Just leave it the way, the way people have been doing it. If you guys are okay with it, what, the way it's been in the past, just move forward, make, get it to the end zone and then in the years to come, do something different.
Yeah.
Add hours, add money. There's so many things. I'm a, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm flexible. Somebody wants, you know, we can get down that rabbit hole later, but let's just finish this, see this through and tweak later.
Yeah, totally. What we're hearing from our staff, what I'm hearing from our staff is that we need to figure out how we can manage this ordinance that has been put into place with our current operators. Like how do we move it forward? And currently our staff is like, hey, yellow flag, like this is, cannot live with and just won't spot anymore. So we're gonna move forward. We're gonna figure out how to do it.
Something, I don't know. I, I see this one, there's like a subcommittee. Um, and that's how things are all up is, I don't know, for something, have all these people here right now before. It could there be like a subcommittee of the outfitters and I would be included with it to... If there's something you could ask us to do to make it, then we have a voice. And we can, we can just cut through some of the red tape or make it simpler. They, they work together and then they, they present something. But I, I, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but maybe there's like a subcommittee of the group that maybe we can work, speed this along and take some of the burden off the county. I don't know if anybody's interested in that, but I would do that.
Well, it is, right, I love that. I think the point is though, that like which part of the ordinance lives with which staff department?
Okay.
And then based on that, where would a subcommittee specifically from the commercial outfitters and the snowmobile club best be able to inform the, and streamline that process? Because the ordinance is not just the commercial operators, right? So that's what we have to do first, is operationally determine where different parts of this live for that burden. And then we can come back and be like, hey, this is where we're at. Can you all help inform this department who are managing the commercial permitting?
Like an advisory board or something?
Or whatever, whatever. Well, but first we have to figure out on our end where it lives. I love that idea though. Thanks for bringing that up.
Like an advisory board or even just the stakeholders?
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
A task force, if you will.
I think it helps a lot. Everybody in the same room, that individual in the emails flying around, he says, she says.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever. It's really, these are the people that matter and should have that voice. That's all.
Yeah.
And you're all very different. It's not like you're all operating in the same area with the same machines, same customers. It's all really scattered about, is it?
Be diverse.
Yeah. All right.
Please help us go get lunch.
Yes, okay. Uh, thanks everyone for being here today. We're obviously gonna need more conversations about this, so, you know, I'll be looking forward to talking to all you guys again. And thanks for your input.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate you guys.
Yeah. It's twelve oh seven. We will conclude this work session at Lake County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.